Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, April 26, 2022. Please rise for a moment of silence. I have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allinson?
Here.
Carmody?
Here.
Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Marrone?
Here.
Tada?
Here, on the phone.
Testa?
Here.
Xandri?
Here.
Chairman?
Here, all present. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda? Mr. Chairman, move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through M? Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The consent agenda is passed. Item four, there were no items removed from the consent agenda. Item five, the public question and answer period. In the front row, your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, I'm short. Angie Conti, North Airline Road. I would like to start off by saying that I have no doubt that this council will fund our very inclusive and exceptional town library. My issue is not with the funding for the library, but rather with the lack of response in the face of the xenophobic, homophobic, and racist comments that were shared at the last town council meeting by a resident of Wallingford. Councilman Carmody, I commend you on your grace and restraint as you face the ignorant comments that portrayed a small part of you as big, scary, inappropriate, and less than. As I listened to the ignorant, nauseating comments made at the last meeting, I wanted nothing more than the privileged members of the council who do not experience life through the discriminatory lens that people like you and me and members of other marginalized groups do on a regular basis to stand up and say, "No, you are wrong." Inclusivity and representation are not woke, but rather they are just and right. Your comments do not represent what we, as elected officials, believe nor want for the town of Wallingford. Sadly though, none of you did, and none of you have since. You let the hurtful words hang in the air like a poisonous gas, sucking all the dignity and humanity out of all those scorned in the comments made. You have chosen to hide behind Councilman Carmody's bravery. You've chosen to let the gay guy do the talking for you. The thing is, it's not the gay guy who needs to stand up to discrimination, it's all of you. It is your job to stand up because you don't just represent one demographic. You represent all the people of Wallingford, including the ones that were spoken of with disdain. Your silence in the face of bigotry is unacceptable, and by saying nothing, you have abandoned not just Councilman Carmody, but also every LGBTQ plus, Black, Brown, and Muslim community member of Wallingford. As elected officials, you need to do better because until the privileged few say enough in the face of bigotry, there will always be a next time, and a next time, and a next time. In life, there are no do-overs, but sometimes there are second chances. So I'm going to give you all a second chance. Chairman Servoni, I would like to ask a question of you, and that any of the other members of council be permitted to respond to it as well. Do you share the same views of the LGBTQ plus, Black and Brown, and Muslim community members of Wallingford that were expressed at the last meeting? And if your answer is no, then why has it taken me to put you on the spot to let the people of Wallingford know your stance?
Ma'am, I'm going to tell you my answer is no. I'm also going to tell you that, at times, comments don't warrant a response. So, and I'm also going to tell you that during the public question and answer period, I've never allowed a member of the public to poll the council. But I'm confident that the rest of us up here would answer the question the same way.
So if anybody wants to answer, they can't?
No, it's not on the agenda.
Well, your silence has been an answer. So, just so you all know, it did warrant comment. It warranted reprimand. It warranted someone to say, "Stop." It warranted people who don't get discriminated against to stand up and say, "This is not okay." Yet you let him keep going and going and going. It was disgusting, and you should all be ashamed.
Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Question for the chair?
Might want to speak up.
This was lowered. I'm taller. It's no problem. Question for the mayor, I guess, or the council on the budget. There, you have a line for Covanta, and it zeroed out this year. Why? Is there no money coming in from Covanta? Or the subsequent?
I believe that was the money that was paid as a tip fee benefit to the town. The project has come to an end.
So who owns the plant now?
The transfer station is owned by Country.
Okay.
It'll come to me, but...
Yeah, another company, okay. It doesn't make a difference who it is, but it's somebody, but not the town.
The actual processing plant in Bristol is owned by Covanta, as far as I know.
So the question is, what's going to happen with the contaminated property down there? Who's responsible for the contaminated property?
At this point, Country is owner of the property.
And they have the funds to clean it?
I believe that when DEEP approved the transfer from Covanta to Country, that was dealt with. It's possible that Covanta still has some obligations in that respect, or they've satisfied them, I'm not sure, but it was done through DEEP.
I would hope that that's looked into because it has to be a... I'm assuming because of all the dioxins and furans and everything that was down there. Dioxins, Counselor Testa, yeah. And furans and all the other chemicals that are down there, that it would be a brown field. So I would hope that it would be taken care of. The other night, I'll walk away. Attorney Servoni, walk away or...
Does anybody else have a comment Mr. Gross is yielding? He commonly does this.
Well, it's only being fair.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The other night, the Board of Education was here, and they were talking about how they have a $700,000 increase in their health benefits. Is it through... Does the town insure them, or do they go out on their own?
The Board of Education, utilities, and general government all are part of the same self-insurance plan. We use Anthem to be the administrator of the plan pursuant to public bid. But we have a self-insured plan, and all of our employees under the various departments participate.
Since it was such a great increase, have you looked at other plans or benefits?
Well, the benefits of the plan are part of negotiations and collective bargaining. To change plans, if there would be different benefits, would require approval through collective bargaining. It's a self-insured plan. We experienced significant claims. The result was a approximately 12.4% increase. And being self-insured, we need to add the money to pay those claims.
And then, I know you don't let the council speak, but maybe Counselor Attorney Fishbein could chime in on this one. Have you done the Connecticut State Partnership Plan? Which is insured through Anthem and is insured for, I don't know, 65,000 state employees and municipalities, boards of eds, all across the state? Have you priced that out?
Actually, that is a richer plan than ours the last time it was looked at, and we believe it would cost us more money.
Believe and are are two different things, Mr. Mayor.
Well, our assessment was that it would cost us more money than our current plan because the benefits are richer.
Did you go out and actually get a price? Because, just let me finish. You mentioned about your... You had bad experiences last year. Or I guess it was last year, whenever it was, and so it raised your rate. When you're in a pool, such as the state pool, because that's what insurance you would have, they are smooth over a larger group of people, so you won't have those ups and downs. You won't have where if you have a couple people have cancer and a million dollar losses. It's smoothed over 65,000-plus insurers. I see many towns have gone to it, and towns, if you go look, towns are switching to it as we talk. So why wouldn't even, or the council, look at this to potentially say... Because you're talking, I don't know how much the towns went up, but if you're talking the board of eds went up 700,000, I would have to assume the town of Wallingford's went up at least a half a million.
We did not experience the same rate of increase. We've had employees leave the plan. They weren't satisfied with the, I guess, some of the newer provisions, including the high deductible. So on the general government side, there was not that kind of increase. With utilities, I believe they did see an increase. I am also aware that at one point, at least towns were unhappy with switching because they were experiencing higher rates, and they had less control over their future, having joined the state program.
Is that anecdotal, or is that for real? Because as I was looking into other communities that have those, many communities have been very satisfied with it. It's easier for them to administer, and their rates are lower. So I'm sure you're always going to find an aberration somewhere. Somebody's... Nothing's 100%. But without even looking at it, Mr. Mayor, you could potentially cost the town of Wallingford, us, the citizens, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars over a few-year period.
Well, we did analyze that. We felt that we were saving money. We went to the self-insured plan. If that means we would no longer be self-insured and go to the fully insured approach, big questions come to the fore, such as who keeps the money? If there is money left over at the end of a year, who keeps that money? If it's fully insured, the insurance company keeps it. Under self-insured, we keep that money. So, you know, there are many questions that go into this. Again, our information was that the package was a far richer benefit package, and as a result, over a period of time, would necessarily cost us more.
Again, it's all anecdotal. It's not proven. I would hope the council... I mean, I don't know what authority the council has listening to the ARPA and listening to other things. It appears the mayor holds all the cards. But I would hope that the council, you have enough, if you have seven or more of you, would agree on something. You can override what the mayor wants to do and do something. So I would hope that you would look at this because, again, costs are going up every year. And if the board of ed was 700,000 in itself, a couple-year period, that could be a couple million dollars that the town didn't have to spend if there was a better plan out there. But the mayor never looks. He stays there. And just so you know, the plan is through Anthem. The state plan is through Anthem. And I understand there are different plans within the company. There's, you know, different levels of coverage. But if the mayor says it's rich and it's a cheaper plan, then why wouldn't the people move over? And if the mayor's saying that the plan, he has people leaving the municipal plan, then this plan might be better than what he has now. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Gross is yielding, if you...
Hi, I'm Whitney Mooney, 28 South Elm Street. I just came in at the end of that woman's speech, and I wanted to address Servoni's statement on not making a statement. And I work in social and racial justice, so I just wanted to just give a different lens that the more we stay quiet, silence is compliance, and that encouraging people to speak hate is being, by being quiet, you're encouraging people to continue to speak hate. And we want to create a space in Wallingford for everybody to feel safe and want to go to the library, especially in terms of like the LGBTQ community. And we want to create a space in Wallingford for everybody to be, feel safe and want to go to the library, especially in terms of like the LGBTQ community, especially in terms of black boy joy and all those other terrible things he said. And I just want to continue, and I will always encourage people, especially white cis individuals, to stand up, speak up, and say, no, that's not okay. And if we want to create a good Wallingford, if we want everybody to join this town, everybody to want to come to this town, you have to stand up against hate. And that's just what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I also want to pile on on the intolerance that was spoken at that meeting. Previous to that meeting, I had asked the council chairman about diversity training, because we've witnessed it in town, not just then, but for years. I belong to a community here that we are in the process of Jewish, that we're in the process of putting bars on our windows because the federal government's asking us to, because of the intolerance in America. And to other minorities that are out there, we're, we're pretty much a white town. And you don't walk in their shoes. You don't hear the hate. You don't hear the comments that are made. You don't see hiring practices that are done. Everything that you think is not around anymore is, as a matter of fact, it's worse now than it was previous, a few years, because it seems to have come to the surface. We're witnessing in Europe right now, in my book Ethnic Cleansing, if you see what's going on there, unfortunately, it will remind you of World War II, what's going on. I have a small family on my, my mother's side of the family because they didn't survive the war. So we have a very small family. And that's the same thing happening. It's all because of intolerance. And I would hope that, as the first woman spoke, that when somebody gets up here and starts exposing those hateful thoughts, that you would shut them down and explain to them that it doesn't belong here in the town council chambers. Thank you.
Anyone else? There being none, I close the public question and answer period. Move on to item six. We have motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a transfer in the amount of $173,375. That will be $115,948 from the Simpson Court Rear Parking Lot account, and $57,427 from the CNR account with, and that puts $173,375 to the Wallace Avenue Lots Parking Lot account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Good evening. Welcome, and please remind us who you are for the record.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, Rob Ultra Midas, Public Works Director.
Allison Kapachinsky, Town Engineer.
So, in, in the way of a presentation, I, I think everybody's familiar with both of these parking lot projects. So if you have questions, we'll answer them, but I didn't want to go into a detailed presentation again. These are two topics that have been kicked around before this, this council for an awfully long time. What we're here for this evening is to request some transfers to provide the full funding for the projects. So we recently went out to bid for some services, yes, sorry. Specifically, we went out for electrical and lighting work, as well as concrete curbing and flat work. So that is two common elements at both of these parking lots now. These will be Public Works projects for oversight with those vendors and our paving vendor, our milling vendor, et cetera. So what we're asking for this evening, if you would indulge us, is for the Wallace Avenue Lots, a transfer of 173,375. $57,427 would come from reserve cap non-funds, and 115,948 would come from the unspent but completed Simpson Rear Parking Lot project. Been a lot of discussion about those leftover funds. So with the both of those transferred into the Wallace Avenue project, that would total $290,640. That'd be enough for us to award the bids we need to and get going with construction. Similarly, we are asking for a transfer into the, it, it's the railroad building parking lot, but we all know it is the Brothers Parking Lot. Presently, we have funding for that project that totals 293,205 with the bids in place, and with Public Works efforts, we need a total of 379,926. So we're asking for a transfer of 86,721, also from unreserve cap non-recurring balance funds. With that, again, we can award the bids and get going with construction of both of these projects.
So the, the version of the Wallace Avenue Lot that the council approved last year or the year before, did that include lighting?
So the project that you saw a year ago, the same one that went out to public bid last year, did not include lighting. This project does include site lighting. So it includes parking lot lighting, and it also includes the provision of three ornamental lights to continue that theme on Wallace Avenue on the east side.
And what about conduits for future improvements like charging stations?
So I am currently, so great question. We recently, a couple of months ago, went out to bid. We solicited for vendors to provide electric vehicle charging stations at some municipal lots. We are still in discussions with the apparent successful bidder. It appears that they will provide, that they will own, install, own, maintain, and operate for a 10-year period at no cost to the town, with the potential for the town to actually recoup some monies in the later years of that, that 10-year lease, if you will. The bottom line is both these projects, we are going to put in the underground infrastructure for EV charging stations at both of these locations.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Rob.
Evening.
Allison, nice to see you. I'm happy to see the period lighting in the Wallace Lot. I'm hearing three fixtures, and I think you said on the easterly side of the lot?
Correct.
So is that generally the border between Wallace, what was that? It's one of the Wallises, Wallace Avenue or something like that.
Yeah, so, so it's Wallace Avenue.
Okay, and is it generally along that border? And then there'd be parking and then the alleyway? Is that generally where we're talking about putting these three fixtures?
So maybe the easiest way, if I explain it again, so if you're coming in from Center Street on Wallace Avenue, presently, you have the period lighting on the east side, your right-hand side. So that was done as part of that first phase of reconstructing Wallace Avenue back around 2013, if I have the year right. What we're proposing is three additional lights that would extend that same theme on the same side of the roadway. So the right-hand side, as you're driving up towards the PD parking lot.
And then what about lighting as you're traveling down Wallace Avenue to the left? It's traditionally very dark. What's being done to address that?
So we will have overhead lighting on the utility poles, but we will also have conventional standard parking lot style lighting in both parking lots, internal to both parking lots, so that the lots are lit. So it's not that the only lighting is coming from those period lightings. We're only just continuing the theme that exists on the east side of Wallace Avenue. But both parking lots will have internal lighting from traditional parking lot standards. They are, they're not the decorative streetscape poles.
So conceptually, in my mind, it appears that, was it Pig's Ears, Silk First, that the right-hand side is going to look period-ish? And the left-hand side is going to look industrial-ish? Am I?
Well, the left-hand side is going to be cleaned up i- in the same sense that it's going to have concrete curbing to formalize the edge of Wallace Avenue. It's going to formalize the curb cuts into the, the parking lot on, on the west side. And there will be, you know, a landscaped island surrounded by that concrete curbing. So, you know, I think it's going to look quite nice and, and similar, except for the period lighting.
So why isn't it contemplated in that island area, which is on the left-hand side, to put one or two of the period lights?
Because it doesn't presently exist on the west side of the road.
So what's the prob, if you, if it doesn't presently exist in the locations that you're putting it on the eastern side, eastern side of the road either? So that doesn't answer the question, why you're not considering it on the western side?
Well, I think it does answer it because it doesn't presently exist in the improved portion on the west side of the road. It does exist on the already improved east side portion. We're just continuing that same thing.
Let me say approved, that's approved by planning and zoning.
Improved. Improved.
Okay, so is it a problem with, with wiring or something like that?
Nope, we can do anything. It's just, it's, it's the dollars.
So how much would it cost to put another two period lights in that area?
If you just bear with me, I want to give you a... So they are, based on our bids, about $10,000 a piece, plus whatever is required for conduit and, and, and power. So a fair number is probably going to be 12 to 13,000 dollars a piece to add those. But I just remind you, they don't currently exist on the already improved west portion of Wallace Avenue.
No, I, I understand. So I'm going to ask you a question. Not only is the Public Works Executive Director, but also a resident, longtime resident of our town. Do you think it would look inviting and more in line if we had period lighting on the western side also?
My opinion is it would, it would look very nice. I, I think the project we're proposing looks very nice. I think that would look very nice, too. I mean, if, if the council so indulged and wanted to add approximately $25,000 to what we're asking for, we could probably arrange to have those installed as well.
Okay, and when we brought this up, because this has been an, an issue for a while, right? I mean, last year, we were told, we got to get this done. We got to approve this. No time to talk about period lighting because we got to go back to planning and zoning. Am I to understand that we're just doing this? There has not been a re-review by planning and zoning?
I did get a zoning permit over the winter.
Okay, so a plan was submitted at that time, which just showed the continuation of the existing decorative lighting?
Yes.
As well as the internal parking lot lighting.
Okay, so let's shift to the Brothers Lot then. And are we contemplating period lighting there as well?
So there is period lighting proposed. It is proposed along, if you're familiar with the Batuminus Walkway that exists along the railroad tracks on the east side. It is, the period lighting is not proposed along the roadway frontages. You know, and, and quite frankly, that's something Allison and I had discussed that was deliberate for, for two reasons. One, that tends to be more of a streetscape project, as opposed to a parking lot project. And I think what we would be looking to add there in the terms of dollars is in the, probably the 200 to 250,000 dollar range. Because of the concrete work, it really should be done in conjunction with other streetscape elements as well. I, I think it's a separate project at that location.
Now, isn't there period lighting already across the street on Hall Avenue?
There is not. That is a missing portion on Hall Avenue, essentially between Route 5 and North Cherry Street. The project that was recently done on Hall Avenue terminated at North Cherry Street, so you still have that block without that.
Okay, I, I thank you for your answers.
Thank you. And, and it's something Allison and I have been talking about, you know, keeping our eyes open for grants to create a streetscape project in that area, that block along Hall Avenue and North Cherry Street.
You know, I will represent that if it's possible tonight, I, I would certainly be in favor of appropriating another $25,000 so we can, you know, work on our downtown and making it more inviting. I, I just don't see it taking the cheap way out here, so. But I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So I guess just to go on the record, I'm, I think the lighting that you've proposed is fine. I wouldn't be in support of holding this project up for additional lighting. I'm really excited to get this finally going because it's been kind of stuck for a while. So when would you anticipate construction to begin and end on this project?
Okay, so I knew that million-dollar question was coming. So my office is poised right away, you know, with, with your approval this evening, to get the awards out for the bids and purchase orders cranked out starting, starting tomorrow. My only concern is the possible lead time on some of the items, especially the, the site lighting. I just don't know what some of that timing would be. Ideally, we're in the ground right away. We're in there this spring and early summer. I would love to see, especially the Wallace Avenue Lots constructed before Celebrate 350. You know, that, that is a lofty goal. You know, it doesn't, it, it's, it just turned spring, but there's not a lot of time left. And the only thing that would really hold that up is the lead time on some of those items. Because we would have to have that underground work done for, for that lighting, the foundations in, before we could pave.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Counselors, Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So some of my questions were already answered. Thank you, gentlemen. I, I, I want to ask, as, as a little bit of an offshoot to Counselor Marone's question, if, if we were to focus on the Wallace Avenue Lots and make the Brothers Lots after, in other words, complete one project, then move down, does that help us? Or we really can't do that because we've got to get all the materials in, we're going to split the work? I'm thinking if Public Works could focus their time in one, they could get it done, then move to the other one. But I'm, I'm wondering if because of the materials you have to get, you're going to be buying everything at once. You almost have to do both at the same time.
Right. We, we really do have to do both at the same time. It's a lot of the same vendor services that we need at both lots. The thing I'd like to remind you, you know, if you, if you think about what, what we have at Wallace Avenue now, you know, Public Works has already done a lot of the work in there over the years. I mean, we went in there, you know, we did demolition, we did rough grading, we installed the millings, we installed drainage. A lot of the work that Public Works done has already been done at that location. A lot of what's left is the vendor work. It's, it's the concrete curbing, it's the, it's the lighting, it's the paving and the striping. They're not things we do in-house. You know, it's a, and again, it's, it's really the same at the Brothers Lot, too. It's an existing parking lot. So, you know, while there's efforts for DPW labor enforces to do, it's a lot of vendor work, and I think it'll just be done together.
And, and I just want to echo the sentiment on, as far as the underground utilities to get those, those chargers in, on, on top of the fact that I'm just a big proponent of it, I, I think it does lend for bringing people to different areas, especially people with those types of vehicles. I do it often myself. I'll park my car somewhere I know there's a charger, and I'll go and eat. And that's just another one of those things that draw people to wherever those chargers are. I, I, I do have a question that, that you, that either of your departments may not be able to answer, and I may have to bring it back. I, I see a lot of almost what I would consider long-term parking, especially down on the Brothers Lot. Now, I know that's not necessarily something in your control, but I mean, as you've been out there looking at the lots, doing your measurements, different things you're looking at, where certain things might end up going, are you seeing some of the same vehicles park extended periods of time?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I'm always going through those lots. Even tonight on my way here, I wanted to have a sense of how many cars were parking at the, the Brothers location, just in case somebody asked. There's 45 cars in there this evening. You know, but I do see a lot of the same cars in the same spot. You know, one thing I can promise you is we will work with PD to at least get those out of there for our construction. You know, but it really becomes a policing matter for, number one, you know, creating the, the ordinance and the signage for parking restrictions, and then, of course, enforcing it at the end of the day.
Yeah, I, and I agree. So thank you for that feedback. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to look at this pragmatically. Like, you know, what I want is the ability for people to be able to park their cars and utilize them even extended periods of time for people that have the, live in the apartments in the area and, you know, be able to have safe places for them to park. At the same time, if, if we're, if we eventually get to a point, now I know uptown, we have a lot more of it than we do downtown, we, as we run out of capability to host parking for the businesses, then decisions have to get made. Are these cars here long-term? Are these cars here long-term? Are they registered? Are they not? And these are the things that we've got to look at. And so you're seeing some of the things I've seen independently, too. And I want to be sensitive on both sides of that. Want to be sensitive on people that are parking because they need a place to park, but I also want to be sensitive to the businesses that can't host their customers because we're running out of places for their cars to go. So I'm happy to see this thing come forward. I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to additional monies for period lighting, but as was already stated, I don't want to hold this up either. If we're doing site work already for underground conduit, can we bring conduit farther up, cap it, plate it, and cover it so that if in the future we've got more lighting, we can place it easier? Is that something we could do with some thought of, you know, maybe some future expansion down the line?
Well, if you're talking about the two locations that Counselor Fishbein and I were discussing on the west side of Wallace Avenue, what I could tell you is, those lights would likely be within what will be a curved-in island. There is a utility pole there, and that likely is the, you know, would be the power source for those. So conduits could be either installed now or in the future, most likely without disturbing new pavement.
So you're basically saying that if some point in the future there was funding for it, or we wanted to add it, it's not going to be super difficult because the infrastructure basically is already there? Or to be able to extend existing infrastructure doesn't require us to cut up the road?
Most likely.
All right. That's good enough for me.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments on the council? Comments or questions from the public?
Debbie Gross, Long Hill Road. Boy, am I happy tonight. I'm very happy to see this project going forward. Thank you. I do have a couple of questions regarding Counselor Fishbein and his suggestion on the additional lighting. Would it, how much longer would it take? Would it really hold up the project?
So I believe that we would just need administrative approval from planning and zoning. I don't know that exact process. I would think about a month to a month and a half. I mean, I don't think that we would have to hold everything up for that, because that's just one component of it, so.
So could it go on concurrently, then? I mean, is it possible that it could be done all at once? I mean, I don't want to see the project being held up, trust me.
No, I think it's--
But if it's possible, I'd like to see the money appropriated so it's there.
Right. I think it's very possible to add the two lights to the project without an impact to the timeframe. That is, of course, you know, like Allison's saying, that we get administrative approval from planning and zoning. The way that typically works, administrative approval is done by the town planner, but it's done after he's given correspondence to all the P&amp;Z commissioners without the formality of a meeting or a public hearing. In my mind, and having been involved with planning and zoning for, well, decades and decades, it's a pretty minor change and most likely would get an administrative approval. Just an opinion.
So that would be great if we could. That would be very nice. Why not do it? Like I said, I'm very excited to see it going forward. My other question is, and you may have said it, does this include plantings and other things like that?
It does at both locations. There's pretty generous planting plans for both locations.
Great. Is there any way of getting a copy of the plans at some point?
So you could get a copy either at planning and zoning, or they'll probably refer you to engineering anyways.
Okay.
Where it also exists.
Thanks. And one other question. Now, the total cost, and you mentioned the total cost of the Brothers Parking Lot, but what's the total cost of, and maybe you said it, of the Woodding Kaplan or the Wallace Row?
Yeah, I apologize if, I apologize if I neglected to mention that. So the total cost with a small project contingency is $290,640.
So they're pretty much the same. Regarding the Brothers Lot, now, I know there's plans in the future of doing other things down there. How does that get incorporated into future plans? I don't know if you know the answer to that, or maybe that's--
Well, I'll take a stab at it. So if by future plans, you know, we're talking about the study that's going on with the historic railroad station, the scope of that study and effort does not include looking at this town parking area.
Okay. Because I just hate to see us spend money and put the cart before the horse, so to speak, on that lot because it's a significant amount of money. So, but I understand it needs to be done, but I kind of wanted to make sure it was done as part of a bigger plan and not having to change it in the future when we decide what's going on down there. Now, the Brothers Lot is about $100,000 more than the Wallace Row. Is that because of the size of the lot, or?
No, they're actually very similar in size. It really has to do with, there's more flat concrete work, you know, with the adjacent walkways along Hall Avenue and North Cherry Street that are affected, new curb cuts. That's really the difference there.
Okay. Great. Thank you. If I could ask the council to please consider appropriating additional funds, if it can be done concurrently without affecting the timeline, I think that would be very, very sweet. And if it gets done before the 350, it's even better. Thanks so much.
Mr. Gross?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. In reference to the Brothers Lot, my question would be, why would you want to do it now? Why would you not want to wait? Because the consultant's going to have back his plan soon. According to the mayor and Mr. Ryan and Mr. Mira, you're going out to bid real soon. Why not put that into the mix at the same time and have the state at least pay for 50% of it or more? Because you're not talking a great period of time here, because they said they're going out to bid this year, going out to go for the grant this year. I mean, this is to the council. I mean, you're just following the orders of the council and the mayor. But is that lot really needed to be done now? Or can you wait a few months to see if you can get the state to pay for half the lot and do it up magnificently with the same money?
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, and I know the question was to you, but I do have--
Or anybody, I mean.
Okay. Well, again, the parking lot area, the public parking lot that we call Brothers Lot, is not part of the scope that's being studied as part of the historic railroad building. Additionally, of that project cost, a total of $379,926 for the Brothers Lot, we'll call it $380,000. That includes $128,205 of a steep grant that we already have that is being applied there. So there are those state funds, you know, that we're already counting on for this construction.
I knew there was a steep grant there, but the steep grant could be moved to the other lot. If you petition the state, they can move that money to the other lot. It's the same project, same scope of projects. They've done it before. They can move the money. You've probably been, you've been involved with Public Works and Engineering, so you understand how steep grants work. Or will, and I don't know how this other grant works, will they allow you to piggyback on that grant? Can you double up on a grant? I don't know that answer.
I don't know the answer.
And is there a timeline on the steep grant? Can you wait six months on the steep grant? Or is it, or does it have a definitive timeline? I mean, these are just questions. I mean, we're talking about hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars here, and to make the lot, to turning Fishbein's suggestion, on the other lot, do the same with this lot. Make it look as magnificent as possible. This is when you come into town from two roads into the center from the Merritt Parkway or Wilvercross Parkway, when you come up, or from Cheshire, you know, on that side of town, make it look magnificent.
Mayor?
Yeah, I think we've reached a point that we're able to move ahead. We don't know that we will get that grant with regard to the railroad station. I don't think it's been awarded. We're ready to move ahead with this. I think it is an important project to have completed. You can always have reasons to wait for more time, but when a window of opportunity occurs, it's best to keep that window open and move through rather than wait, and other factors can become obstacles that then delay even further.
The money's already in the budget. You can move the money to the cap and non-recurring. You let it sit there for years. You do it with other funds anyway. You can have the money there, let it sit, and see what happens with those grant monies, and then see what happens. It's just, again, as Debbie Gross said, you're putting the cart before the horse sometimes, and this one, you should really, I mean, you really want to make downtown look magnificent. It doesn't now. This is one thing you can really do a great job on. Put it in the grant with the train station and see if the state will pay for half of it. Thank you.
Counselor Carmody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Good evening.
There was some mention about additional decorative lighting on Wallace Avenue, and I just wanted to follow up on that. Can you explain why they aren't already included, those additional lights?
Yeah. So, you know, again, as you come in from Center Street, up Wallace Avenue, going towards the PD parking lot, you presently have the decorative lighting on the right-hand side, the east side of the road. It does not exist on the west side of the road. We were only continuing that theme. Once you get beyond what I call the improved Wallace Avenue, what was reconstructed in 2013, you get into this project area. So we were just continuing what already exists on the east side. You know, to Counselor Fishbein's point, if we had an additional $25,000, I think we could easily add two lights to the west side as well.
And would that hold the project up at all?
Like I said, provided we get an administrative approval from planning and zoning, which I just personally think is likely, we should not have a timeframe impact.
There are no lights on the west side, so now we'd have two at the end of a period with nothing in between on the west side. I mean, again, it's carrying forward a theme. If we want to do all of that other side, certainly that can be looked at. But to put two at the end and not have any continuity from Center Street, to me, once again, we look like we're not doing a complete project. So at this time, we have the money to go ahead with what we have. Doesn't mean something can't happen in the future. But we can move forward and hopefully have something completed within a reasonable time.
Mr. Chairman, I just think, I mean, now is the time to implement any options I think that we should with regard to this project. And if there is a desire to do so, I would be for that as well.
Thank you, Counselors Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to make sure I have my numbers straight here. I see what we're transferring, and the total of the transfers are $173,000 and change. But that's not what this whole project is going to cost up on Wallace?
No. So let me, and I know it's confusing. So the 173-375 transfer is for the Wallace Avenue lot only. That includes $57,427 from cap non-recurring, the unexpendited balance, some of the unexpendited balance. It also includes essentially transferring over $115,948 from the leftover, already completed Simpson Court rear project.
So-- Right. I follow that part of it.
Okay.
And that was my gripe last year when we didn't do it. And this is where I'm going. What is the total cost of that project?
Okay. So that, I think I stated earlier, so the total cost of the project for Wallace Avenue for both those lots is $290,640. So yes, while you're transferring in 173-375, what your next question should be, well, what's already there? This council already created a project for $77,000 some time ago. We also have, in an older cap non-account, about $40,000 for Wallace Avenue reconstruction left over. So it's the four pieces. It's the $40,000 left over from Wallace Avenue, it's the $77,000 you gave us earlier for this, and then it's the two transfers, the transfer from the remaining Simpson rear funds and that small portion of 50, I say small, $57,427 from cap non-recurring.
Okay. And you said that this current project is including something that the original bid specs did not. What is the cost of that?
Okay. So that, so what this project includes at Wallace that the previous one did not is the site lighting and the electrical work associated with that. So that's the decorative lighting that we talked about, and it's the internal parking lot lighting that we've also talked about. The cost of that, the lighting and electrical alone, is $112,961 based on our bids.
All right. So we would, if we had done this prior with the prior project and the prior set costs that we originally thought we were coming, we were going to have to come up with another 112 anyway, right?
Very reasonable.
All right. I just want to make sure I follow the numbers, because I was real critical about the fact that these were sold to us as one project, they couldn't be separated, and we stopped when the bids came in high, even though at the time, the funds were sitting across the literal street in the leftover funds from Simpson Court Parking. We're doing this in-house now as opposed to out of house, so I like the idea that our folks are doing it. I'm concerned that the price is almost the same, bringing it in-house, however. So the waiting, this kind of leads into some of the other points that are getting made. If we're going to add some additional lighting, if we want to see if any of these grants match or not, what's at risk? Since it didn't seem like there was a big risk last year, and we said we're going to put this thing out to bid again six months from now, and now we're talking about, gee, maybe we could look into tying it in with a grant and maybe having the state pay for half of it. So is this ineligible to do that? Maybe this is an open question, if we start work on it? So in other words, if they modify what they're asking for, for the train station by itself, and try to add elements for things like parking, would it not be considered because we already executed work on it?
I think that's the case with a lot of state grants. If it's a project that you've already funded, it's, you're probably not eligible for the grant funds. I see that in a lot of various grants. It's not to say it's the case with every one of them. I do want to just make this point, and it is hard to compare apples and oranges, because this project now includes site lighting, and the previous one that went out to bid did not. But if you take the $112,961 out of this current project, we're actually $40,000 cheaper than the bids that came in for last year's project.
Right. And I would have expected that if you guys bid the project yourself, and we had bids that came in between $193 and $288. I'm sure if Public Works made a bid six months ago, or whenever we were, I shouldn't say six months, it was longer than that, when we kicked this off, you guys would have come in lower anyway. Materials were less. So it would have been my expectation, it would have been lower anyhow. And that's to our credit for having people that can do this work. My concern was waiting, my concern was added costs, and the element of, well, we'll go out to bid and see if it comes in any cheaper, which has never, ever happened at any time in this town, ever. And I made a big deal out of it because that was a big concern of mine. We sit up here, especially at budget time, and hem and haul over $25,000 here and $50,000 there, and we blow $100,000 this way. So I'm real sensitive to that. I would like, I would like to see us try to get attached to the grant, but I don't want to put this whole thing at risk. This thing has been on hold, first off, as far as I'm concerned, this parking lot has been 10 years coming, and it's been on hold for nine months or so to a year because of the situations that unraveled. And I don't want to, I don't want to carry it forward any further. But those answered my questions, so thank you both very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess foundationally, you know, because I am going to end up asking the mayor to recommend the funding, I just want to explain what I'm thinking. So, well, let me start with this. Mr. Senna, do you know how much money we have in cap and non that is unencumbered, unpromised, leftover from-- have in cap and non that is unencumbered, unpromised, leftover from prior projects?
Through March, it's about $1.3 million.
Okay. So just for the newer counselors edification, cap and non basically is comprised of pilot payment by the Electric Division on annual basis, which is usually about $2 million, and we're very lucky to have it. We use it for capital projects. Other towns don't have that ability. But projects come in lower than what they were budgeted from time to time. And a few years ago, you know, we started to look at how much money is sitting there, and by ordinance, we technically don't have the ability to move that money. We have to get a recommendation from the administration to move that money out of cap and non or to appropriate it for a project. So with that foundational thing in place, Mayor, would you recommend or partner with us on moving some of that in excess of $1 million, and I would ask for $25,000 for the purposes of that additional period lighting?
Well, I understand the goal, however, I don't think we should depart from changing documents of this type at a meeting and trusting that we'll have accuracy sufficient to make an appropriate, an appropriate use of the money. So the document you have in front of you is complete, it's ready to go. If we're interested in doing the entire other side of the street, I think that's a separate project. I am not in favor of doing one end of the street and then having others along that street, other property owners saying, where's the lights? Why don't we have lights? So typically, when we do a streetscape, we do both sides, and that's really what this is. However, there is nothing on the other side. We are continuing that theme, as has been stated very adequately by Rob. So I don't think now is the time to change that. It can be a separate project at some point, and it should be designed and properly laid out so we're sure of what the costs are. It's not an estimate that is truly an estimate tonight, as it's basically just a multiplication of what the lights cost on the other side. There could be unknown factors that could increase that, could decrease it. It's just, it's not a time to change this right now.
So looking at the planning aspect, and I believe when you're saying the other side of the street, you're talking about Center Street, correct?
No, I'm talking about the other side of Wallace.
Okay.
There's no period lights along the west side of Wallace.
Yeah, along the roadway. So I think the two lights that we're sort of identifying here would be in the middle of that parking lot area.
Oh, no, no. This would be along the edge of the road. We do not put period lights in the middle of the parking lots. Period lights are decorative, and they run along the highways. We do not put them inside parking lots for parking. I mean, the light really isn't, isn't as good as the overhead lights as far as lighting a parking lot. But we, that is not a theme we have fallen at all. I don't think we have any period lights inside parking lots.
So what Rob was talking about was curbing and islanding in the lot, and I believe what I had suggested was the period lighting in that area. Were on the right, the same wavelength here?
I believe so. So, you know, what I was saying, you're talking in the middle of the lot, but I think what you mean is it's centered at the lot, but it is along the roadway. It's curving on the west side of Wallace Avenue, and it's about 10 feet wide of an island and curved on the parking lot side. And it would be lighting in there, but essentially it's roadside.
Yeah, it's not on the edge of the road. It's in the island, which the island has some sort of...
With to it.
Yeah. Got it. So it's approximately five feet in from the roadway, and we're talking about two lights. So Mayor, just envisioning what potentially we're dealing with, assuming there's two lights there in this island area, what area were you contemplating would need to be matched up?
Didn't follow, what area what?
What area, assuming that the two lights are placed in this island area, as we've been talking about. You had said that it should match up to another area, which is part of a streetscape project, and I'm trying to envision in my mind what area you're talking about.
Well, I'm talking about, we will have other lights in that parking lot, in the rear portion off the road, and they will be the overhead lights. The period lights follow along the street line. So whether you call it an island or not, it will be right along the street line. But it doesn't match up with anything, because there are no lights that come in off of Center Street on the west side of Wallace. If we're going to make a streetscape out of it, then you would have lights all along the west side, just as this will make for lights all along the east side.
So the other lights that I think Rob talked about were, there were fixed lights on buildings, correct?
No, there would also be freestanding parking-style lights.
On the, on the west side also, but not in the island?
Not in the roadside island. You know, once you get into either of the parking lots, there will be light standards just like there are out here at Town Hall, you know, parking lot.
So right now, what we'd be left with is period lighting on one side of this lot, no period lighting on the other side under the mayor's vision. The vision that I'm looking at is period lighting on both sides of the roadway, which I'm trying to figure out why that wouldn't look better than what's before us.
Well, again, it does not connect with any other lights on the west side, and typically with streetscaping, you want a continuity, as we've done with Gwinnebyak and Center Street and North and South Main Street.
So why did, why did we ever put decorative light one in this lot then? If we never had a plan to hook it up to anything, and now I'm hearing that because we aren't hooking it up to anything, we can't have more lights, then why did we ever go down this road?
I'm not understanding your question.
Quite. So, I mean, I believe the only way this could be funded is through the administration, and, you know, I'll, I'll make a motion to appropriate $25,000 from cap and non for the purposes of the decorative lighting as described here tonight, and we'll see where it goes.
A second.
So there's a motion on the table. Is that an amendment to the motion on the table?
Yes. If that's procedurally how you'd like to deal with that, that's...
Otherwise, it's out of order.
Yes, that would be appropriate.
I second the amendment.
Great. Counselor Testa?
I don't understand where this came from. I don't know what we're talking about. If you wanted to redesign the lot, you should have put a motion on an agenda to get involved with designing the parking lot. I just, yeah, more lights would be wonderful. I'm all in favor of them. Put them everywhere. I just, when we're voting on something like this, to make a motion to say, I think we should put two lot lights there, and we're all thinking, I don't know what the hell you're talking about. Because nobody knows what you're talking about, frankly. But $25,000, I put a couple more lights, that would be fabulous. I would like lights all around the whole thing, and I want a gazebo, and I want a, I want an amphitheater. So I think I'm going to make a motion, we add $100,000 to do that. And I'm being a little sarcastic, I'm being a lot sarcastic, but this is not how we do things. I just don't understand this. If you wanted to put more lights in there, we should have brought up a motion. I'd like to see the design of the lot, but tonight to say, I want to add a couple of lights here, and we're all trying to picture where they're going to be. And we can't. We can't picture that. That's not how this is done. It just, it makes no sense to me. If everybody thinks it would be a nice idea to have a couple more period lights on the left side of Wallace Row, then let's ask the architect to show us what it will look like. Let's do this the way people do things. Let's ask the people that are doing this project, add a couple more lights, and let us see what it looks like. And then we might say, oh, maybe four is better, maybe six is better. But to just say, let's put two more in, because that's my vision, I just don't understand this. I don't understand it. I'm probably more frustrated, because I'm agreeing with the mayor. You know, it's not my thing. But I just, I don't, you know, I'm going off again, I do this, but sometimes I don't understand where we're coming from. 45 minutes, talking about two additional streetlights on a project we should have approved 45 minutes ago, because it's ready to go. Let's get it done. If you'd like to beautify the project, then come forward with a motion to consider beautifying the project, and let's get a design for that and do that. But to just say, oh, we've got the money in the, believe me, I can use every dollar of that $1.3 million. I've got ideas for every dollar on what we can do with all that extra money in the cap fund. So to just say, we have a million three, what's an extra 25? Let's put a couple more lights in. No, 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 no. I have ideas for that money too. But who's going to object to two pretty lights? And I would, I honestly had to approve them tonight if it made any sense, and if we want to go forward with it, fine. But get on track here, please. This is literally ridiculous. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein?
So since I do attend these meetings, one would recall that when the Wallace Avenue Lot project came before us, we talked about period lighting, talked about how many lights could go in this lot. We were told that we couldn't have period lighting, because it would have to go back to planning and zoning. We were never informed that it was going back to planning and zoning. We were never informed that there were other plans. We're never informed what projects are going to be in the mix. There may be a gazebo that's being planned. Not going to come to us, going to ask us. It comes to us at the end for appropriation. That is the only time procedurally that we get any chance to opine on most of these projects. And I once again state, the period lighting, in fact, I thought we passed a resolution having to do with the period lighting, if I recall correctly. So, you know, that has been something that many of us have been concerned about on this particular lot before the Brothers Lot was even discussed. So, you know, I, you know, I suppose we could pass an ordinance that says that, you know, no applications from the town can be submitted to planning and zoning without our approval, and then we could insert ourselves into that process. But that's not presently what's before us. So the first that, the first that any of us knew that there was going to be decorative lighting, I mean, I was contacted by a counselor, you know, why is this money, why we have, we need more money? And I said, well, I see decorative on the backup. Maybe they're doing the period lighting. Period doesn't appear. That's the term that we've used all of the meetings that we've talked about, this decorative lighting. So it's saved for tonight and the question. I'd like to work together on these things. I'd like to have this lot look pretty, inviting to our downtown. That's the process that we're faced with. We are not entitled to insert ourselves into these plans. So, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, you know, I'm going to respond to the no notice. Planning and zoning does not take action without agendas being posted, their meetings are posted. We have no idea who might be interested in what. That's why they're posted, so that people can review what is going to be taken up at a planning and zoning meeting and be involved at that point. We don't know what everyone might be interested in. So it's not, it's not that anyone is being kept out of anything. The notice is there, and sometimes people are interested enough to get involved, and sometimes they don't. But, you know, we need to move business, and there's business before us, and I ask for your support for it.
Why aren't we given notice when, I mean, when anything happens on town property, somebody asks to use the parade ground? We give them permission. So as the, I think we are the gatekeeper to utilization of property, why procedurally are we not given notice that the administration's going to planning and zoning for a project?
You are given notice through the agenda and the posting of meetings. That is the way it is done. There's a public notice. These actions are being taken. When we state we're going to design a plan, has to be approved by planning and zoning, that was stated at earlier meetings. You know that it's going to have to go to planning and zoning. Merely a fact of, you know, find out from planning and zoning when it's going to be on their agenda. Watch the posting of the agendas.
If that's the process, I mean, adjoining property owners are afforded notice. They are not required to look at agendas, the newspaper. They get notice by certified mail. So to say that we are being treated, the gatekeeper to utilization of the property, as subservient to one who statutorily has notice, I don't know that that's proper.
Adjoining property owners are not always given notice of actions taken by planning and zoning. For certain, certain things, yes, but not everything. You know, we seem to have, as soon as we reach a point we can do something, there's always an objection of some kind. If there's a desire to have streetscape on both sides of Wallace, fine. That's a separate project. We need to do two parking lots. The action is before us. We've debated up and down. I don't understand why parking lots generate so much interest, and we end up spending years trying to get anything accomplished.
Mayor, I just, you know, you know that when we talked about these lots, we talked for about two hours about period lighting. And it, I just have to say, it would have been helpful if the information that an application, you know, I would have liked to have known that. That would have appeased, you know, I would have been happy about that. I don't see the problem in letting us know, hey, we're going to planning and zoning. We listened to you. You know, we're going to do this period of lighting, but we're only going to do this side. What would have been wrong with letting us know that? But it is what it is.
Counselor Allenson?
I don't know if it's because my husband is on planning and zoning, or if it's because I read the things that come to our inbox, but I'm not surprised about the period lighting, because I heard about it somewhere before. I'm pretty sure I read it in an agenda, and then the minutes from planning and zoning couldn't source when that took place. But we do get all of the minutes sent to all of us. Additionally, we're kind of off task here. If we could just get back to the main point of this agenda item, we need to move forward, and at this play, at this point in time, it could be Christmas by the time we work out period lighting, and we won't have broken ground on the parking lots. So if we need to take this up another day, can we please do so? But I'd like to move forward with the agenda item.
All right. I think that wraps it up. Madam Clerk, could you please first call the roll on the amendment?
Allenson?
Yes.
This is on the amendment, the $25,000 for lights.
Still yes.
We'll come back to the public.
Carmody?
Ye- yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
No.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Is this to add the amount to the motion?
It's the lights, the $25,000.
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman?
I vote no, but the motion is amended. Now on the motion, please. Now on the motion, please. As amended.
Allenson?
Yes, as long as we're moving forward now.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
No.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman?
I vote yes, the motion passes. Can I get a motion on 6B?
If we approve a transfer in the amount of $86,721 from the Cap'n Non recurring fund to the Brothers parking lot accounts.
Moved and seconded. We already talked about this, right?
I think we covered it in detail, Mr. Chairman.
Further questions from the council? Questions from the public? All right, Madam Clerk, would you, oh, come on up. You can, you can come to the microphone.
Debbie Groves Long Hill Road. I think I got confused on all those motions and what you voted on. Can you just quickly clarify it?
The initial motion was to transfer $173,375 for the completion of the Wallace Avenue lot.
Okay.
The amendment was to add two period lights.
Okay.
It was, the amendment passed.
Okay.
So as amended, the vote was to move that money plus $25,000 to add the period lighting to the Wallace Avenue lot.
Got it. So all the money, including the $25,000 for the lights, was appropriated. Perfect. So that will not hold up the process, though, on the completion of the project?
We hope not.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to have everyone clear. There's a suggestion about appropriating an additional $25,000, but it's not appropriated.
Duly noted.
Debbie Groves Long Hill Road. Now, so all the money's been appropriated, including the $25,000. If the mayor decides that the period lighting piece of this doesn't, he doesn't want it to go through and will not go forward with that, does that mean the whole project stops? Because now it just sounds kind of ridiculous.
No.
I mean, I, no, perfect. Thank you.
If you, if you were following the discussion and, and,
I was trying to, but it got kind of convoluted.
If I could just summarize so we can get to the next item.
Perfect.
Counselor Fishbein identified that because that $25,000 is coming from Cap'n Non, that it really required a suggestion from the administration. So it's a suggestion from the council, but I don't think it's going to hold up the project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll on 6B, please?
Allenson?
Absolutely.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa? Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes, it got eight votes, so it passes. I suspect Counselor Testa would have voted for it, but we can't say that.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks for your time. We have a wave rule five.
Mr. Chair-
Mr. Senate.
Can I just make one comment? So that 1.3 number that I gave you?
Yes.
That just got reduced by $144,000. I just want to be clear on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know. Mr. Baltromidus, is there any chance you're sticking around for item nine or not?
That was a no.
Do you have a due courtesy and shuffle your agenda items?
Are you telling me you have somewhere to be?
I do. I do have a personal commitment. I did submit a memo that I think addresses, you know, any questions that would come up regarding that?
Yeah, well, in light of your patience with item six A and B, and you need to be somewhere, I'm going to call item nine now. Counselor Fishbein, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm just trying to figure out what's going on here. We said like a year ago, maybe two years ago, that there was going to be Wi-Fi in this room at least, so we didn't have to use hotspots anymore.
So if I could just clarify?
Sure.
It was approved in this year's budget. So it was, it was one of the council requests for the budget that took effect July 1 of 2021.
Okay. And since about that time, we've been told that because of the pandemic and supply chain issues, that the parts to do this were, I mean, at one point I heard they were on some boat in the Pacific Ocean. And then about two weeks ago, I asked for a list of what we're looking to get. And I got that, and I thank you for that. And then I turned around and went on Amazon and found them cheaper and they could be here in two days. The email that was sent to us, along with that invoice, and I believe the email was originally sent to just myself and Chairman Savoni, indicated that we didn't have a router, but that Rob Baltromidus would be hooking up with Frontier or Verizon, some one of those companies to get service. So today I walk in and we have a memo. So I'm just trying to figure out what's been going on since July, first of all, with regard to getting this stuff. So, Rob, I don't know if you're part of that or, I mean, are we being, have we been told the truth? I mean, what's going on?
I'd like to think you've been told the truth. Unfortunately, I've not been involved with ordering the equipment that you speak of. So I, I do not know where it was ordered from. I believe it may have been the town clerk's office that did the ordering. It was wiring and a wireless router. That's my recollection. What I can tell you is what my involvement has been in, you know, I'll, I'll call this a project to provide high-speed internet to the council chambers. While it sounds like this was initiated quite some time ago, I can tell you my involvement really is only over the last couple of months. And I can give you a status update on what my involvement has been.
Please.
Okay. So I had, I finally was able to reach a Frontier representative who gave us some really good news that, you know, high, high-speed internet is available essentially in the street. They can bring it into the building. I have asked them for a written agreement for the town to consider. I'm still waiting for that agreement. That agreement, when it comes in, will be reviewed by purchasing. And, you know, I'm hopeful that in the next couple of weeks, we're at a, at a point where we can sign an agreement with Frontier. They will run the service into the building. From that point, once it's in the building, between Public Works and Chris Luckt, we will get wires run into this proximity here. It'll terminate at a connection, and that's where a wireless router will be installed to which this town council will have passwords and access to.
So you first started working on this two months ago?
Oh, I don't recall exactly, but it was in three to four months ago, maybe.
Okay. So am I to understand that Mr. Luckt has been trying to get this other stuff and?
It's either, it, it could be. I, I know it's not Public Works that is ordering the internal wiring and the wireless router itself. It's something, you know, I can look into if a similar and workable product can be procured quicker. I'm happy to look into that.
And are you aware of the procedure? Because, you know, one of the concerns is the invoice that we were sent indicates that the purchase order was opened in November. And the vendors that were chosen are more expensive than what I've found on the internet. So are you aware of why?
I'm not, but I am very familiar with, you know, town procurement rules and regulations. So it's most likely a vendor that's in place based on a bid. And that's probably where that order started from, was an approved town vendor based on a public bid. If they're not performing and delivering, perhaps they can go to a second, third bidder or another source altogether.
Okay, I'm just, I mean, we hear horror stories about how government operates, and this is a horror story. So it's unacceptable, and I know you're not the one. We put out a purchase order in November. We still don't have it, we still don't have the stuff, as I sit here today, as far as I know. Right?
Not, not my purchase order, so I wouldn't know if the materials came in or not. You know, but I, I don't mind taking more of responsibility in this project and seeing if that part of it can be expedited as well.
I would, I would appreciate that, you know, since I was, you know, it took me 15 minutes to find the stuff on Amazon, and I'm not sitting here advertising for Amazon. But at some point, when you can't get the stuff for, what, six, six months, almost six months?
We do a lot of purchasing at Public Works. I can tell you, I mean, I run into similar situations and have had to seek alternate vendors.
Okay. I, I appreciate it. And, you know, I appreciate you sticking around for this.
Sure.
I did review, I did review your memo. And, and what prompted the, putting the memo together?
The agenda item that I had noticed.
Okay. All right, thank you. You know, Mr. Chairman, I'm just, I'm concerned about the representations that have been made over the last many months as far as frustrations that have been expressed about getting these items. And I don't know what the reasoning for that is. Mr. Luckt is not here tonight. But I know that we've been told for a very long time now that you can't get these parts. And quite obviously, you can. So I'm going to leave it at that. I'm just, it's trust but verify. And I'm concerned. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. I, I'm concerned about how long it's taking as well. But I was wondering if you could send me the prices you saw the, so what I found on Amazon, they were $100 more each minimum, and they were refurbished items. So I started to suspect, because if you search other websites other than Amazon, that part of the reason why this is taking so long is because it was a really cheap bid and the distribution chain or they can't, I don't know, supply. I mean, I see it. This is the same equipment. I'm always searching for the first item because the other two are just cable. Hundreds, maybe in the $400 or $500. And maybe Counselor Zandry has looked as well because he's also an IT guy. So I didn't see anything on Amazon. I looked, and, and I know it can get tricky because there's a difference between managed, unmanaged switches and power over, power over ethernet and the gigabits and all that other stuff. But that was not my experience in that, that I found anything cheaper than this. And I, I suspected that that was the problem in, in the delivery timeframe.
One of the things, if I can suggest, because I was, I was happy to finally find a Frontier representative that I could make contact with. You know, one of the things I can look into is either purchasing or, or renting that device from Frontier themselves. I mean, I, that's what I do at my house.
The equipment that they're putting in is for a switch, which is to, is, is a little more advanced than what they, they would supply. I understand what he's looking for. The Wi-Fi component is probably separate and maybe intending to come from Frontier, but.
Just so that you know, I did send it to all the members of the councils.
Just now?
Well, I did on, on the day. I just sent it to you again.
Okay.
And all of the links are in the email, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So is this primarily an update?
Primarily, I guess.
Right. So what, what is the end, the end game here? Eventually, we will have Wi-Fi service for the council only.
Yes.
Which is fine, which is something we should have had. Okay. That's fine. I, I just want to share this with my colleagues that it will, it is my intention that soon I will be proposing that a project utilizing ARPA funds to totally upgrade and provide broadband access and total revamping of the internet, email, the whole thing, all the electronics in town hall. I think that that's a very viable use of the ARPA funds. So I'm not sure if that impacts this or not, but it's probably not. But it, it's something I think we should be doing. So I think it's great that we're going to be able to finally get Wi-Fi access as counselors. But everyone that walks in a building should have Wi-Fi access. Everybody that works in a building should have complete broadband access. Everything that happens in this town hall should be, should be automated. And so that's, that's coming. I'm going to be making that large proposal out of the ARPA funds in the near future. But I guess it really doesn't impact this because we're not approving anything tonight. I just want to make sure there wasn't any overlap. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else? There being none, Mr.?
Clarification. So the item, yeah, so it's a, the item that Counsel Fishbein found, Fishbein found is, is about $100 more. We're just, he was looking at the quantity issue, two versus the one, right?
Transceivers are cheaper.
How much? That's a small item. I mean, the big item is, is the switch. So I think that's probably why it's taken so long. I know he's not here, but.
I'll pay for him. I'll split it with you.
Yeah, and when you do, it'll be on a council agenda to accept the appropriation. Mr. Baltromidus, thank you very much.
Thank you for taking this item when you did. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Back to item seven. Oh, I'm sorry. We have a wave rule five.
Mr. Chairman, I move we waive rule five to consider and act upon three East Dayton Hill Road contract contingencies.
Second.
That's a motion to amend the agenda to waive rule five. Is there any discussion on the council?
Do we get any backup for this?
Yeah, what are we doing?
This is the backup.
It's time sensitive, so.
Okay. I, I just.
Yeah, point of interest was, Mr. Chairman, so I understand the function of the wave rule five. I'm just not sure, with no backup, how would we know if we wanted to consider it or not?
Well, we can ask the law department if they want to provide some background before we amend the agenda. But we shouldn't discuss the whole agenda item before we amend the agenda.
I think the item indicates that it deals with East Dayton Hill property.
It's, it's the property at the opening of the Tyler Mill.
Okay.
At the corner of East Dayton Hill and Woodhouse.
Okay, thank you.
Wasn't that in the request for Article Five? Wave five?
This is a little anemic.
It doesn't say east.
It says East Dayton Hill, which, which is a pretty long street, Mayor.
Yeah, it says, that's the subject.
Yes. All right. Is there any further discussion on the motion to waive rule five?
Is this going to entail executive session as well?
No.
Okay. All right, then that, I'm fine.
All right. I'm going to ask for a voice vote on the motion to waive rule five. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, the agenda is amended. We have some discussion and possible action regarding the East Dayton Road, Hill Road land purchase. Attorney Small, can you bring us up to speed?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As you may recall, we, we did, you did approve the purchase of this property, which is the residential lot that abuts the Tyler Mill property. We executed the contract that the council approved. There are contingencies in that agreement, and they're time sensitive because if we're going to take some action, it has to be done by next week. There's two issues that need to be considered. One, as a result of the title search, the property, there is a restriction on the property. It was part of the subdivision. It was a nine-lot subdivision requiring that the property be used for residential use. use. Clearly, although we're not intending to develop the property, there was talk of possibly making some parking spaces available for those using Tyler Mill to deal with parking issues in that area. In consultation with Caddick, you know, that's a real restriction, and the restriction actually provides a procedure where a simple majority of the property owners can agree to change that restriction. So with respect to that, my proposal would be to write to those property owners, there's, would be seven of them, and ask if they would consent to the removal of that, outlining for them what we were planning on doing with the property. It's not gonna be developed. The second contingency was the environmental assessment, which we did have done on the property, and we just got the report back the end of last week. And that property, that report shows that there's been dumping on this property. The dumping has consisted of drums, cans, pipes, machine parts, parts, and there's also this mound, which has some pipes and a tarp and some metal pieces that appear to be, have been buried on the site. There's no signs of any spillage or anything of that nature. It was not observed. The environmental consultant recommends, not, not that we need a phase two, but that when the waste is removed, that it be observed by a professional, just to make sure, to monitor it. So I have provided this report to the seller saying, are you gonna remove it? Are you gonna take care of this? And I have not heard back yet, but we do have only until next week to decide that they can terminate the contract if they don't want to do it, and, but so also can we, if they refuse to do it or if you, based upon the report, don't wish to proceed. So those are the two contingencies that we're dealing with, and I'm looking to see what you want to do about it.
Do we have any idea what it's gonna cost to remove the debris?
You know, you don't know what's in the mound. You don't know if it's deep. I didn't get that far because, you know, we just got the report. You know, that's something that if, you know, I can ask for more time to do an analysis if we wanted to explore that, or, you know, wait for the, the position of the seller as to removing the waste. But because we're having meetings, and I really wanted to get that before you because, as I said, the contingency runs out next week, so I wanted to get what direction we should be taking on this.
I don't speak for everyone, but my suggestion would be that we get the seller to agree to an extension to remove that, have them remove that debris, and have a professional observe the removal so we can determine whether or not what's left behind is something that we need to be concerned about. I certainly don't think we should be acquiring a property that produces environmental concerns for us. At the same time, its proximity to the Tyler Mill concerns me, and it should be cleaned up one way or the other, whether we purchase it or not.
And I think that if, if that was the approach that the council wants to take, I think I would ask you to also consider that if that is refused, what my action is to be at that point in time.
Counselors Zandry.
Yeah, I kinda want to echo that sentiment. I, I guess, I guess if we go back and, and request that, you know, our offer's still good contingent upon the fact that they've removed and cleaned it up, they could always refuse. It's like any other sale. Fix the chimney, or no, I'm not gonna fix a chimney, you take it as is. Now, my question would be, even if we decided to not make this purchase because of that reason, what recourse would we have to get them to clean that up? Because now we know it's there.
Well, I haven't really gotten that far, but, you know, certainly if it's, I'm not sure if it's all visible from the road, and that would be a blight type issue. I mean, the environmental did not see, they saw rusted storage tanks and cans and, but they didn't see any signs of actual, any type of spillage or anything of that nature, so, but certainly, you know, from that perspective, I'd have to look into further whether or not there would be something beyond that. I'd have to take a look at it.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I, I feel, being that close to Tyler Mill in the beginning, that, that's actually what enticed us to do this, more so than just providing the parking. It was an opportunity to pick this up because it abuts that whole preserve. So if we've got an element that's potentially, you know, environmentally impacting, I don't want a situation where they just say no, and they walk away, we walk away, and so on. Again, I don't want us to bear the responsibility, but at the same time, I would want to be able to use appropriately anything that we've got within our, at our disposal to get them to clean up what shouldn't be there in the first place.
Just to add a comment, if it's not our property, we would be limited on going on the property to determine whether it's hazardous or not. So, I mean, there's, it's not just because you know something's there in order to force an issue, you, you need evidence of what the nature of it is. So I, I don't want anyone thinking that because we know it's there, we can order someone to do anything with it. In order to get an order, we, we would need actual evidence to support a, an order that really intrudes upon the private ownership.
Well, I, I'm confused, Mr. Mayor, because we already know something's there. The, the fact that we were looking to make this purchase, it was, it was a level, it was a level one environmental inspection, so we know what's there already because of that action.
We know there's a pile of debris. Whether that constitutes something that at law would allow us to basically order a, a property owner to remove that if it's, as the town corporation council indicated, if it's a blight issue, that's one thing. I suspect it's, it's well off the road, so I'm not sure it would constitute blight. At that point, then there needs to be proof of an environmental hazard, and you'd have to prove that. The mere fact there's a mound of debris there wouldn't necessarily make it an environmental hazard, in my opinion. But I'm just saying, it's not a sure thing, because we know there's a mound of debris, that we would have the ability to force a property owner to do something with it.
All right, so let me, let me add to my question then. There was, there was a comment in some of the description that there were drums. Did I hear that correctly? Are these visible from, if I stood on the Tyler Mill property at the property and I looked in, can I see drums?
I haven't been out there to see if you see it from that vantage point. So, you know, here we have, so, we're a little off topic because we're talking about what we're gonna do about the contract, but to your concern, so we have an environmental report. They do, they do not recommend that we need to do a phase two, which would be, you know, to look for an actual, you know, that would be where they would be worried about the, any oil or other type of substance. However, we have the base report, so if we feel that there's something that needs to be looked at beyond that, I mean, the mayor's correct, I probably'd have to get the court order to go further than that, just based upon what information we have. But if we can see it from the road, if we can see it from the property, I, it's, you know, it would be something that we wouldn't just ignore, we'd look into it. But, you know, as to how far we can go without a court order and whatnot, we'd have to figure that out. That would be down, you know, that would be if we get that, to that point.
No, and I appreciate that, and I know that, that, you know, by further expressing my concerns, I kind of moved away from the topic. I, I would like to find a way to still do this. I would like to work with the property owner to get them to take care of it, because we shouldn't do it as the town. We shouldn't own the responsibility as the town, and if we walk away from the opportunity to purchase it, it should still get cleaned up. I would, I would end up wanting to follow up on that regardless, but I think immediately you've addressed my question, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Tada.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay, Mr. Chairman?
I can hear you.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to say, I'm, I'm so sorry I couldn't be there tonight in person. I thank the chairman and vice chair for coordinating this and our, our TV crew for helping out. I did have surgery about 11 hours ago, so couldn't make it, but I'm happy to be on the phone. So in regards to this item, I just wanted to say, I know you all know I was, I think the lone Novo on this, when we voted on it, because I just didn't think it was a necessary purchase for $60,000. But now, you know, I, I understand, I was the minority on that, clearly. But now that we have some issues, I think this might be a good chance to maybe rethink and kind of get over this before we get into a mess. So now we have, you know, there was always the wetlands. We always knew there were wetlands, so we would have had to overcome that to do the parking, but I think, you know, we felt that was possible. Now it looks like there's some illegal dumping, potentially maybe environmental issues, which I know from experience, I've worked on environmental and brownfield projects that we own, and it gets extremely pricey. So worst-case scenario, you know, we end up spending a lot of money on that. And then also now there's a residential restriction, so we would need to overcome that also. The, kind of the issue with this property in the first place was that no one really wants it, except for us, and I know there are builders in town who didn't want it. And we're basically the only ones willing to pay for it. So I, I just think now is a good time to maybe take a step back and rethink this $50,000 expenditure, and it really makes sure that, that we understand what we're getting into here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbine.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it was 60, right?
Six oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. Because as you recall, I, I thought that we spent too much. So Janice, if you're looking for direction, I would suggest, I'll just throw it out there, that we get an extension of 60 days, that they get the property cleaned up, that we can have our person go in there and get a level two, and as long as it's clean, that we'll close the transaction. Other than that, I, I agree, we can't be buying their problem. So I've been asked to move that. I will move that Janice, the Law Department, go to the sellers and ask for a 60-day extension so that they can clean up the property. We get our own level-two environmental report for the property, assuming that it's clean, that we close the transaction upon that happening. So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. I'm a little concerned about the level two, which I presume you mean to be a phase two.
Yeah, so the, the consultant said a phase two was not necessary, that, but they, someone, the consultant should observe the work as it's being done, so as the mound is being, you know, taken out, and then if there's some evidence of something, then everything would come to, you know, then they'd have to address it in accordance with all this...
I was trying to empower the Law Department if a phase two is not necessary in your discretion, but I didn't want you to have to come back to us upon seeing something, so...
All right, so then the second part would be if their answer is no, then, then I, you need to add to that, I would like you to add to that, that you, if you're making the decision, if that, if they say no to that, then we're, we terminate, is what?
Yes.
If you make that part of the vote, too.
That if they say no, they're in cooperative, that we do not close this transaction.
Okay.
Second. Should we address the restriction on residential use as well while we're at this?
Yeah, so I think that within that 60, same 60 days, we could see if that's going to be resolved with the property owners, if we get the majority of consent. I think we can do that within that same time period, but we would, I mean, I guess the question is, you know, it's not that we're gonna be developing it, but, you know, that if we put a few parking spaces there, then someone could argue that we violated that covenant.
Right.
So...
So would you, Counselor Fishbine, accept a friendly amendment that allows the Law Department to write to all the other homeowners in that association to ask about the lifting the restriction on residential use?
Certainly.
Would you second that?
Yes.
Okay. Can I let Counselor Testa go first?
Oh, yep.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the, the motion in favor of all this, does the motion obligate a, a phase-two environmental analysis?
No.
Or is the intent to authorize it if necessary?
I, I wouldn't, and the reason I'm concerned about a phase two is, I think if a consultant tells us we need one, then that's a longer discussion. My experience, a phase two can eclipse the value of that property.
Right.
And so if we're looking at a phase two, I think that's a road we don't want to go down.
Well, wouldn't that normally be the, the responsibility of the, of the seller?
It would.
That's why I was asking about it.
And it would be a basis upon...
Right, so I, I wouldn't want to see us voting to authorize undergoing that at our own expense. So I wouldn't, I don't even want that as part of the motion. I just want to clarify, if we're on the same page, I'm good. I like where it's going.
I think, I think if, if our consultant is there to observe the removal and doesn't have a phase-two concern, then I think we're fine. If, I think this consultant reports to us that there's a phase-two concern, then I think we need to have another discussion or terminate the contract.
I think there would be required an appropriation to cover that, which we are not dealing with tonight.
Right. I, I mean, I'd make it clear that we, we, in no, in no, under no terms would we be obligated to pay for it. We could, we, our motion could say we're gonna require it.
So we're gonna, so we're gonna say, let's talk this out. So we're gonna say, we're going to give them 60 days to remove the waste with our consultant observing the work as they've recommended. And if they do that work, and there's, I think we'll get a sign-off from our environmental consultant, we go forward with the closing, provided the rest, the other issue is taken care of. If, at that point of the removal, the environmental consultant says you need a phase two, then, you know, I think, first of all, both sides would still have the right to terminate, and you know, really, at that point in time, a phase two shouldn't be on our dime, I don't think.
Not at all.
So, they'll probably walk away at that point anyway, so...
Can I just, there's viewing, and then there's viewing. So are we contemplating that our individual be able to go on the property? Are we contemplating that our individual be able to take soil samples?
Yeah, I think that if, they did say, if, if deemed necessary, they would, they would look to do that.
Okay, I just...
Which that would be...
You know, I don't want viewing to be, okay, you gotta stand at the property line.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I, I understand.
No, they have to be there.
But I also, you know, our expert may want to say, you know, I can't tell looking at that dirt whether or not it's contaminated, and I want to do some soil samples, and I don't want them to say, no, you're not entitled to because you can only view. So I leave it to you to figure out.
Yeah, I mean, I think, right, if there's any refusal, I think we just, it's an automatic termination from our perspective. I think that would be the best, the safest way to do that.
I would agree.
And we, we should go so far as to specify that we are requiring that the contents of any containers be revealed. If someone says, oh, yeah, there are drums on there that have degreaser in it, well, maybe they're not leaking, and that's fine, but that would indicate, oh gee, we better look at the ground.
I think from what was seen, it was, everything was empty, but, you know, we don't know what's in the mound. We don't know what's buried.
Well, clearly, yeah. All right, I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Counselors Zandry.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just refreshing my memory, because you said subdivision, and then we said association. Is, is there, is it like an open space association or...
No, no, I, I use that word, that's the wrong word. So when this subdivision was created, that was a declaration, so that is a restriction on all of those homes. There's, there were nine properties, but I believe one was merged into two. Obviously, the seller is one of the owners, so we need just the majority of the other seven.
So every...
So it's on their, it's on the land records as a restriction against the use of each individual lot. But it can be, it lasts, initially lasted 25 years, and then it renews automatically for 10 years at a time, but the owners can agree to either change it or get rid of it.
So this, this is each one of those lots grouped together? So there's this restriction on all of those lots of that...
Correct.
...original nine subdivisions? Original nine subdivisions?
Correct.
All right. So I don't see any concern with that. I don't see why they wouldn't do that. They'd be blocking a property owner from selling the property. I don't think they would do that.
Well, they may not want another residential house. I mean, it's, I mean, I don't think it's a big deal, but you never know.
Never know. Yeah, all right, no, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Questions or comments from the public?
Debbie Gross, Long Hill Road. Now, the seven, there's seven or nine property owners that you said on East Dayton Hill Road?
There were originally nine lots as part of this subdivision. I believe that two of them are combined, they're owned by the same person, and then, you know, obviously, I would assume the seller's gotten consent, so just need a simple majority.
So that goes kind of all the way, trying to envision East Dayton Hill Road. So it goes up quite a few, about maybe a half a mile, quarter a mile up East Dayton Hill Road? Because I know it's two-acre zone in that area.
The lot we're talking about is right at the corner.
Well, I know exactly what you're talking about. I'm asking about where the property owners that have to agree. I know exact, I'm very familiar with the area. In fact, I own property that abuts the East Dayton Hill Road people, or houses. So I'm kind of concerned, and I've grown up all my life in that area, so I know it very well, and I know that that particular spot there with the parking lot there, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't know, I don't feel comfortable with the town owning that and putting a parking lot there. I know that there's a lot of red flags, as Counselor Tata had mentioned, and that maybe this is an opportunity to say, maybe this isn't a good idea for a parking lot. If we wanted to obtain it to extend the Tyler Mill Preserve area, I get that, but I'm not comfortable with a parking lot there because I know for a fact that that area could be a problem with parking, and you're encroaching in a residential area. And I don't think that I would have a vote in it, even though I abut the East Dayton Hill properties.
I think in terms of a parking lot, we're not talking about the whole lot. It would be probably no more than maybe 15 cars.
That's a lot.
Well, I'm just saying, it's not the whole property.
No, I get it, but I still am concerned of 15 parking spaces in that very residential, two-acre zone area, and I know, I won't tell you how many years that I've been very familiar with that property, but I know that there's been very, there's been some serious issues there, and I think you're putting it in the residential area, and there's plenty of parking down the road where the soccer fields are, which isn't far away, so I don't know why we need that as parking. So I guess I'm saying it's, there's red flags, it's maybe this is a sign that says, timeout, maybe we shouldn't acquire this property. So like I said, I don't think I have a vote, but my property does abut East Dayton Hill Road. It actually abuts to the properties on East Dayton Hill Road. So I just wanted to say that. I'm hoping that you kind of rethink it, because 15 or whatever, even five, I mean, think about it. People could be there at night, it's very residential, and it's a concern. Thank you.
Anyone else? Bring it back to the council for a roll call vote on the motion, please.
Yes.
No.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
No.
Tata?
No.
Testa?
This motion is to authorize?
60-day extension. Get the debris removed.
To look into further information.
And get our, our.
The, effectively, if this motion failed, what happens?
We have to decide whether or not we're going forward with the contract, because our contingency period expires next week.
Oh, okay, so that could be a separate consideration, yes.
And it's not, could I just, it's not really just to get more information, because we're saying you've got 60 days to clean it up.
No, no, I understand.
All right.
I got that, I got that.
It would, it would result in action if it all fell into place. So otherwise, if this motion fails, it would be a motion to either terminate or whatever.
That would be next.
That would be next, yeah.
No.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman?
I vote yes, but I believe the motion fails. Yep, there were only four yeses.
Correct.
Okay. So you need.
So now someone should make a motion to terminate based on, oh, what?
And that's why I brought up the executive session originally, because, you know, it's possible that we could direct the Law Department to renegotiate the underlying contract, which is not something we would do in open session.
Well, if you want, if the goal is to say, we don't like this, we want to renegotiate, then you still would tell me that you want me to terminate. You have, I mean, I have to terminate unless they gave us an extension to renegotiate the agreement. I still have to have the authority to do that. You don't want, you don't want the contingency to go away.
Why, just to deal with that comment, if we voted right now to authorize you to go to them and say, listen, there's environmental issues, you're going to have to pay a lot of money, we're going to offer you $15,000, which, don't go crazy about the number. We should not be doing that in open session. And that would be just merely a modification. You wouldn't have to, right now, get rid of that contract. There could be a strike line on the current contract. But that's not a discussion that we should be having in public, because the other side could know.
Right. All right, so however, I still have the, we still have the contingency. So I can say, if, I mean, the council could, they could vote to say, we're going to terminate, but you, well, we can talk, if they want to renegotiate, we'll have a meeting to discuss that. They may not want to renegotiate. They may want to be done with the government trying to buy this residential lot. So, but I have to be able to either, I have to be able to terminate if I can't get them to extend the time to have a further discussion. I can, I can try to do that, to renegotiate the agreement, and while I'll come back to you, and we can talk about how, but they don't have to agree to that. But I have to be able to say, well, then we're done, it's terminated. I have to have that authority, otherwise the contingency goes away. See what I'm saying?
Mr. Chairman? Counselor Allenson's next.
That being, this being said, motion failed, I'd like to make a motion to terminate the contract.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Counselor Marone?
I was going to make the same motion, so.
So, you know, I know what the motion is, but I think it would be helpful if we knew why, since we've identified, I mean, I'm the one, you guys overrode me on the number. I said we were paying too much for this property. So a need was identified for this property, why am I now hearing that there is not a need? So I'd like to know why I should follow that lead. I don't know where that goes.
Mr. Chairman? Counselor Marone?
So I think, for me, the pitfalls that we didn't know existed before now exist in terms of the environmental concerns and the price, based on the other potential things that may need to happen with it, so I'm no longer interested.
At any price?
I wouldn't say at any price, but at the negotiated rate, I'm not interested. So we need to reject this contract if we wanted to enter into some sort of other agreement. I suppose that could be a different discussion.
So the position of the motion, of the moveance, is not to walk away, in effect, but perhaps to keep some sort of?
Closer to the mic.
Process going on so that perhaps we do end up with this property? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, that's not what I heard in the motion. Motion was simply to terminate.
Understood.
And was seconded as such.
But what I heard over here is there's at least a thought over here to perhaps renegotiate. I mean.
No, your question to me was, would I consider renegotiating at some price? And I said what I would consider, but my motion, or the motion that I seconded was just to reject the contract. So that's all my intent that I have for right now.
All right, so if I may, I would suggest an amendment to the motion that we put on our next council agenda, an executive session, to address possibly going back with new terms.
Wait, I don't understand. So point of information, Mr. Chairman, why would we need an amendment to do that? Couldn't any counselor just request?
Yeah.
An agenda item for the next meeting?
Because I want to know when I'm voting on this, that there is some end game. It isn't just, I mean, if the end game is just to walk away from this, we're never going to hear about it again, that's one thing, and that's something that I would probably support, quite frankly. No, I mean, just walking away is something I probably wouldn't support. But if I know that there is still interest in this property in some way, shape, or form, and that's tied to this motion, then that gives me some solace here. That's, that's all. So that's, those are my thoughts.
I'm not going to amend the motion. I'm going to keep it as is. If we still have appetite, somebody can ask for an executive session in the next meeting.
Okay, I got the answer.
All set? Counselors Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm going to agree with Counselor Marone. I think that, you know, at the time that this was discussed, the, you know, the property was not being used for anything where it was, it's a potential building lot. We were, we were cutting off a number of different things by maybe taking a look at purchase, and it was a, it was more attractive at that point in time. We didn't know there were problems on the property. We knew that there was some elements with, you know, the lot and some conformity and where the wetlands stop and all of that. A lot of that has shifted now, and it's been part of this conversation right now. So I'm, I'm, I was right on the fence about doing it in the first place. My main, my main desire with doing it was dual-faceted. It was, it's abutting the, it's abutting the preserve right now, and there's already a problem with, with car parking at that entrance. It shouldn't be there anyway. So I felt that this offered a solution if we put a few parking spaces there and get them off the road at that turn, because that's where they're parking. Now, given what's been uncovered and discovered, again, I'm not interested in putting the town in a situation where we could potentially own an environmental issue, whether it's at the Phase 1 level or Phase 2 level, certainly not the Phase 2 level. But this doesn't, the other element of what I was hoping to do over there, which was to alleviate the parking problem, doesn't necessarily have to come from the purchase of this property, especially considering the fact that it might not be as attractive as it was before. There's other things we can do. Put up more signage, move Jersey barriers closer to the road, you know, you know, work with the police, put a patrol through there, and at first, you know, identify the parkers, they're not supposed to be there, and eventually tag them. There's other ways to approach it. So to me, there's too many potential negative variables that are now seemingly increasing, and I don't longer have the appetite for it. So I'm also going to be interested in removing it. Thank you.
Further comment from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on the motion to terminate?
Allenson? Yes. Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tata?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Servoni? Or Chairman, sorry.
I vote no. The motion passes. Moving on to Item 7. Discussion and possible action regarding finalizing ARPA applications. Counselor Laffin, your item.
Thank you. So we received the amended drafts. Is the consultant on the phone? I know that was the original plan, but it's also been two hours, so.
Jack, are you on the line? I gave him the number, so.
Okay. So.
Did he call in?
He's not called in. To, would you like to?
Do you want me to go call him again?
Effort at summoning him?
Yeah, I'll have him try again. Thanks.
All right, I was going to start with a base motion for everybody to work off of so we can kind of keep going. I guess when Attorney Small comes back, I was going to have her talk or answer any questions about her recommendations. But my base motion, and I'm totally expecting this to be amended and adjusted and cut apart as we go, but I'm just trying to give the foundation, would be to approve the applications from the consultant and accept the recommendations of the Law Department for the ARPA applications, for the ARPA program.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Anything else you have to say before we find out whether or not our consultant is joining us?
No, because I think Attorney Small, he had questions.
Mr. Chairman, I.
Mr. Carmody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like, I'd actually like to make a motion to table Agenda Item Number 7. I make this motion because this packet was dumped on us just yesterday afternoon, and I think we, as a council, should have the opportunity to have more than one day to review such important information. And frankly, I think the administration is continuing to purposely try to obstruct this council from having a say in the dispersment of the ARPA funds. And also, Mr. Regan was supposed to be here tonight, and he is not, but he also had promised us that he would have the revisions to the applications within a week after our April 12th meeting. I've seen nothing except for yesterday's document dump. And so I personally would like to have more time to review this and to review these documents before voting on it. I think that is the responsible thing to do on behalf of our constituents in Wallingford.
I'll second the motion to table.
There was a race to second that motion.
Joe, you can add it.
Madam Clerk, you can pick whether it was, it was Marone or Zandry who won the race to second the motion. Discussion on the motion to table Counselor Testa.
I agree with Counselor Carmody.
Oh, you all sat? I'm sorry, I was waiting for more, but that's okay. Did I see your hand, Counselors Andrew?
Yeah, but Counselor Testa said everything I wanted to say.
The opportunity for brevity is ironic in this instance, because we're waiting to hear from Attorney Small. And I'm reluctant to move on to Item 8 before she comes back for a variety of reasons.
But if we table, there's no need for a discussion.
I understand that. Did we get another caller to join us? I just heard a noise on the phone line.
This is Jack Regan with UHY, I just joined.
Mr. Regan, I can hear you, but you sound far away.
I agree with Counselor Carmody.
Oh, you all sat? I'm sorry, I was waiting for more, but that's okay. Did I see your hand, Counselors Zandry?
Yeah, but Counselor Testa said everything I wanted to say.
The opportunity for brevity is ironic in this instance because we're waiting to hear from Attorney Small. And I'm reluctant to move on to Item 8 before she comes back for a variety of reasons.
But if we table, there's no need for a discussion.
I understand that. Did we get another caller to join us? I just heard a noise on the phone line.
This is Jack Regan with UHY, I just joined.
Mr. Regan, I can hear you, but you sound far away.
You sound pretty far away, too.
Well... Yeah, I can hear you. Your connection is just somewhat faint, but I guess we'll make the best of it. Just to bring you up to speed and to bring the Law Department up to speed, there's been a motion to table discussion on the applications. The packet was presented to the council yesterday. Counselor Testa has made the point that the motion to table would stop all discussion, and therefore, I'm compelled to call the roll on the motion to table.
Okay.
Please call the roll. Madam Clerk, thank you.
Allenson? No? Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
No.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman?
I vote no, but the motion to table carries. Therefore, we are on to our past. We are on to Item 8, which is discussion and possible action on taking the standard allowance regarding ARPA funds and the amount of $10 million. I guess before we go forward on this, I want some comfort that, actually, I want lots of comfort, that if we, if we take the standard allowance, that we can still do the variety of uses of the ARPA funds that the committee has discussed and that we discussed at the last council meeting.
That is what we believe. I believe Jack believes that to be the case also.
Yeah, this is Jack Regan, J-A-C-K-R-E-G-A-N, with UHY. Yes, that is correct. The selection of the standard exemption does not preclude the use of the funds for any of the intended purposes that you previously discussed. The only things you're not allowed to do for are reduction of taxes, payment of debt, payment of claims and judgments, and contributions to pension or post-retirement health care funds.
Thank you. Counselors Zandry?
Yeah, I just, I want to be crystal clear on this because I've had a couple of conversations about it, and I'm, again, I want to be crystal clear. We voted to take 25% of the, in total, $13 million funding to use for business use, businesses, and then 25% for nonprofits, and 50% remained unallocated. So to me, the numbers in my head are 3.2 million, 3.2 million, at 6.5 million. I want to make sure that if we vote on this, taking the standard allowance of $10 million, that we have not interrupted or caused the situation with the original intent of the vote from the prior meeting. Can I get a confirmation from that? Because I want to make sure I'm clear.
Yes, I can confirm that. There is nothing, by taking the standard exemption, mechanically, what will happen is that any of the projects that you approve, some of them will get charged to the standard exemption, and others will just be charged to what I call the regular ARPA bucket. The way that you intend to use these funds is not perfected one bit, claiming the standard exemption. It just impacts the way that the information is reported to Treasury.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Further discussion on Counselor Testa?
Just a point of order. Should a motion be on the table for us to continue this discussion?
Yes.
Just to have the discussion?
I don't think we need one, but yes, sure. I move that we take the standard allowance regarding the ARPA funds and the amount of $10 million.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion on the council? Counselor Testa?
I think it's very helpful to all of us that some things we weren't clear about have been cleared up for us. And with the prior vote, we're just taking, we're taking a stand here that we want to be deliberate. We don't want to move too quickly. Given the understanding that, you know, this is very important to a lot of people, but we haven't been dealing with this very long. And the council rightfully found a way to play a meaningful and proper role in this, and our subcommittee meetings have been productive. So this gives us a little more time to continue to talk about what our priorities are going to be. And that's all. So I think this, I'm comfortable that we don't feel like we have to make rash decisions because of some misunderstood deadlines. So I thank, thank everyone for that. That's all.
Questions or comments from the public?
Just one quick question, and I don't know if Mr. Regan can hear too. The, did they figure out the...
You should identify yourself for the record.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Did the town figure out the loss revenue calculator?
By taking a standard exemption, the town does not need to do any loss revenue calculation. The rules permit the town to take up to $10 million as revenue loss, no questions asked.
But if the revenue loss is greater than 10, can they take that?
This is a one-time election. And, you know, once the standard exemption is collected, there is no ability to unselect that.
I understand that. What I was just asking, though, Mr. Regan, is if the standard loss deduction is greater than the standard deduction, would they, would it be beneficial to take the higher amount? Because that money is really, you don't have to account for as drastically as you do with the others.
Yes, that certainly is, you know, that's certainly the case. I'd have to go back and look at my loss revenue calculation to see where it shakes out. I did not think it was going, if I'm remembering correctly, I didn't think that it was going to be near the $10 million amount. But I can, I can definitely rerun that calculation and provide that stat.
That's the only reason I was asking Counsel, Council Chairman Servoni, was because if it's a greater amount, the town's had a lot of time to figure it out. It's a bigger deduction to figure out. It's a bigger, it's a better, the more money you can deduct that way, the better the town is.
We have discussed that, and I think, Mr. Senna, you indicated there was an estimate in the vicinity of $2 million.
Right, and we don't have a lot of time. We have to make this election by April 30.
Oh, I know you have to make it by April 30, and you're going to make the standard deduction. I understand that. I was asking, was the standard deduction done? It's been known about longer, and I can guarantee it's greater than $2,000, uh, $2 million, based on the formula, because there's a 4.1% escalator every year.
Actually, there's a 5.2%.
Okay, it's 5.2%, so it's even...
In the final rule.
Yeah, so, and us having a budget from 50, I don't know, it goes back three years. You've got to figure the escalations. We have budgets, it was probably $150 to $170 million in that span. The numbers, hey, you didn't do it, that's fine, but it might have been more beneficial to the town. I just wondered if you had done it. Thank you.
Seeing no hands in the audience, I bring it back to the council, the council for a vote on the motion on the, before us.
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone? Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Motion passes. All right. The next item is Item 10, Executive Session. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Then move we go into executive session pursuant to Section 1-206D of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale, and or leasing of property.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Please kindly clear the council chambers. Thank you. Please kindly clear the council chambers. Thank you. I call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I declare the council back in public session. There being no further business on this agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned. We will convene in sixty seconds for our next meeting. Good evening. I'd like to call to order this special town council meeting on the budget for Tuesday, April 26, 2022. Please rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Allenson, here. Carmody?
Here.
Fishbein?
Here.
Laughen?
Here.
Marone?
Tada? Here via phone.
Testa? Zandry?
Here.
Chairman?
Here. On to Human Resources, Risk Management, Pension, and Insurance Property Casualty.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Remind us who you are and why you're here.
Sure. Jim Hutown, HR Director.
Kurt Tribber, Risk Manager.
Thank you. Questions regarding Human Resources. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Looking at the infrastructure expenditures, and it appears that last year, we appropriated $10,000 for a network server, but that has yet to be acquired. So what's going on there?
So, we're in the process now, that project has been delayed until July 1, and we're in the process now of purchasing new computers for the office in order to implement a internal network.
Okay, so is that going to suck up the $10,000? Or is it, because I'm looking at the, you know, the reserves in force backup, which is page 89 of our budget, and I don't, I don't see that expenditure carried over to next year.
Those, those computers, the software and the server, I'm sorry, not the server, the computer and the software to implement the network, those purchases have occurred in this fiscal year, and we're just waiting for the delivery of that equipment now.
Okay, so is it, so as we sit here, well, as of January 31 of this year, halfway through this fiscal year, at least based upon what we're looking at, nothing had been spent out of this line. So...
The equipment was ordered. It's, you know, been backlogged for information technology equipment, and we expect to get that within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. When was it originally ordered? We had this issue earlier this evening on electronics.
I'd have to go back and look at the purchase order.
Okay, so you're telling me that a purchase order was done sometime last summer?
I don't believe it was last summer. It may have been in the fall, the beginning of January. I don't have it in front of me, but it's been ordered, and like I said, we're supposed to take delivery within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, and do you know what vendor that stuff was requested from?
I don't.
Okay. It'd be helpful if you, you got at least me a copy of that purchase order, because we had a similar issue this evening, something internet-based was ordered in November, still not here, representation's not available, and, you know, we approved the money, and I expect that we approve the money because it would improve government, and they needed it. So, just a little concern. So that's all I had on your budget. So I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laughen?
No, yeah, I'm interested in that, too. I'm just, I'm guessing it's the same vendor that was earlier. I mean, it would make sense that the purchases would come from the same type of vendor, and it's taking a long time. So, thanks.
Anyone else regarding HR? Moving along to Risk Management. Counselor Fishbein?
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, Human Resources and Risk Management-